A meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. It's gonna get windy tonight and tomorrow, more about that later. Roll call.
Sandy Kufal.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Kristi Hildman.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Bishar.
Here.
Okay, we're all here and counting four. First thing on the agenda is bills payable, entertain a motion.
I will make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $248,029.33.
Support.
Motion support, any questions or anything on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hildman.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bishar.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next is off the all anticipated highlight of the supervisors' report. It's okay, Bill. Alright, as I always do, we start off on high water. We're, uh... The bad news is we're still higher than we were this time last year, the water levels. You know, we're actually closer to about a foot higher. We know it's dropped down probably 14, 15 inches from the all time, the height of this January or July. But we're not out of the woods at all. We're gonna be talking more about high water. A little bit with our emergency manager, Justin Westmiller. But this is the time of year right now, really from like late August through September, October, November, is when you get your most drop. And it is dropping, we'd like to see it drop a lot more. And it has some, but not enough for my comfort level. December through February, mostly, sometimes you'll get some drops in that range, but mostly kind of stays flat. And there, I mean, historically. Did have a conference call with the governor's office and Senator Lowers, Army Corps of Engineers, Justin was on it and others. And we'll be talking more about that later. It was basically for the, if she's gonna sign the emergency, the declaration of emergency letter. And we had some really good granular discussions about advanced measures that possibly could be taken for next year. And I think the most important thing is they realize that, you know, we are, do have a problem and there are some solutions out there. And hopefully, we'll be able to get some, you know, a little bit more relief if we have the same problem next year. The road commission has pulled out quite a few of their plugs on the road, is low enough now. Not all of them, because there's, I know a spot on the county road and by Sassy Marina Drive and with Riverside, that if we pull them, they'd still be two, three inches of water in the road. We're not sure what we're gonna do with that yet, if it's still that way when it freezes. But if that's the case, the pumps won't work in the winter. So we may have to build up those sections of the road with stone, we're not sure yet. I've been talking to the road commission about that. Hopefully not, hopefully it'll drop down. But, and we're looking at rebuilding two of our sewer pumps at two different locations. It's very hard, if they need to be swapped out and changed out, it's very hard to do that during high water. And for one reason, they're both running it all the times. And I think one, we have a bearing, it sounds like, that's going right, John? And the other one's in dire need of being rebuilt. So we may be doing that here in a little bit. And the water department has extended and filled two of the fire hydrants, we got five more to go. And that's been working out real well, when they get time to bang one or two out. OHM started their initial inspections on our sewer interceptor. And we also started working on our saw grant also. They were here Thursday. And as far as we can tell, the initial inspection went well and they don't see any hiccups on it so far. They GPSed everything and so that project's well, gonna be well on its way. Also, I've been talking with IRA and Algonac and the county. You know, our wastewater treatment plant and the whole system, we really don't have a good ironclad agreement. There's lots of holes, it's loose at best. And I was talking to the, well Kirk Weston, who's in charge, and he agrees. And so we're discussing the possibility of doing a new 50-year agreement with who's going to run it and have definitions, you know, who owns it? What are the responsibilities and expectations from all the different parties? And, you know, who's responsible for insurance? And basically how it, you know, how the charges work, I think with flow rights is the best way. And how it's reported. And we're gonna get together here and then with legal guy, Mr. Fletcher with the county and maybe get that rolling here in the next month or two. I think it's well over, is well needed and it would save a lot of problems going forward if everybody knows what's expected of everybody else. Because right now, we were kinda caught blindsided on this interceptor issue and everyone's pointing fingers at everybody else, so. Been working with Chief Rose on some new fire trucks. We've been looking at several different, like three or four different brands. And we narrowed it down to the E1 brand. And after comparing prices and quality and everything else. If anyone would like to review the quotes to get a hold of Chief Rose, I'm actually putting together a finance package right now to pay for it and we'll be coming to the board soon, maybe as soon as our next meeting. And see if we can pull that trigger and get some help coming. Remind, and it does take about 12 to 14 months for delivery of these things, so. And we're in dire need of them. Do we hear from the FEMA on the, is there still more rounds of grants or?
No.
Okay, so we didn't get, we didn't get one, so. And we will continue to try to get some grants through FEMA, we've been actually pretty good at that. Started working on bonding out with our MERS retirement plan to bring us 100% funded with our retirement plan. So far initially, I think it makes sense for us to do that. And bond rates are very, very reasonable. Basically, in a nutshell, we can become close to or 100% funded in our retirement plan by doing a bond and giving the money to MERS. MERS makes between 6 and 9% a year on the money that we give them. Our bond payment would probably be around 2%. So basically, we're paying interest on 2% money and making, you know, 6, 7% on it is, in a nutshell. But we'll have more granular numbers and it will get a lot more detailed in the near future with that. Still working on our health insurance renewal. And let's see, what else? Oh, our payments hunter safety program starts this week. What do you got, 65 kids?
Yep.
It's growing. We started at 40, five years ago, six years ago?
Probably about 30.
30?
We started off with each year a group.
Yeah, what is about, is this the fifth?
We have 520 on a waiting list.
Is this about the fifth or sixth? It's gotta be fifth or, yeah, it's gonna be the sixth, we've done it five more, five times already. And it's free to the kids and it's a very popular program. And then also, I just got an email, I just read it like 10 minutes ago. The planning commission, we're doing our master plan and they're going to have the first of a series of open house. And the first one's gonna, is slated to be Wednesday, November 13th, 3:00 PM on Harson's Island and 6:00 PM on the mainland here. So that's Wednesday, November 13th, 3:00 PM on Harson's Island. I assume at the lions hall, but we'll grab that. If there's a problem with that, maybe we can do it in our fire hall. And then 6:00 PM on the mainland here at the hall. Let's see, what else is happening? Our fourth annual scarecrow festival, October 26th, Saturday. Make and take scarecrows, we're gonna have a DJ, scarecrow contest for the first responders, businesses and service groups. Photo watch with a professional photographer, face painting, dog costume contest. We're gonna have a musician there, a giant obstacle course. And I'm gonna have the best time of our township employees through that, I can tell you. Mike, you're gonna go for it?
There's no, there's no competition here.
No competition, okay. I'm gonna run it. So we got the paw patrol coming and lots of food and fun. So other than that, we got all kinds of park and rec programs. If you're on Facebook, like us on Parks and, or Clay Township Parks and Rec or give our building department a call and we will hook you up with all the information.
Artie, what time are we getting that started on Saturday?
Uh, is it noon?
Noon to 5:00.
Yeah, noon to 5:00.
Noon to 5:00?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. And we get a large turnout. Last year, it was kinda cold and rainy and we still had really good turnout for it, so. And then the following Thursday is trick or treat, Halloween. This is the only holiday that lasts a month. So, alright.
Saturday's looking 54 and sunny right now.
54 and sunny, good. We'll be rocking and rolling with the DJ. Alright, public comments, do we have any public comments right now? Public comments? No public comments. We'll be pressing on consent agenda, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of October 7th, 2019. Check reports, road watch notice from the county and there was no communication or request.
Support. Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. Okay, we don't have anything on their unfinished business. On their new business, first thing, we have our emergency manager, Justin Westmiller with, he's gonna talk about potential flooding updates and ice jams and all that good kinda stuff. He's just full of great news.
Good evening, everybody, thanks for having me. First off, before we get to that, I just wanna say thank you to the board and to Clay Township and Harson's Island for doing a great job this spring and summer. You guys were amongst the most heavily impacted with our flooding incident. Obviously, we're still in it, right? But I wanted to just say thank you to the residents, to the community and to the board, to Artie for the leadership. A really great job in a very difficult situation. And I couldn't have seen a community do a better job, so thank you all very much. So let's talk a little bit about the flooding impacts, the potential for ice and water in your community here in 2019, the winter 2019, 2020. So we're going into the wintertime with a higher water level this year than we had last year. Something to the tune of between 6 and 10 inches higher than we were last year. So that means we have a higher potential for flooding in your area, especially along the St. Clair River. That's what we know, that's a known quantity, alright? So what we're most worried about is how do we get assistance to the residents along the river? Whether it's along the main St. Clair River, along the North Channel? Should they start getting the impacts when we start getting all that pack ice together? The wind shifts the wrong way and everything starts locking up, because we see that happen a lot, right? And then that water rises quickly. Well, the problem we have right now is the water's already up high. We're at 577.16 this morning. You're gonna see this wind right now shift out of the southwest. And just tonight, you're gonna see the water come up to 61 inches, which is 570, it's like 577.8, 577.9, right? Which will get us almost right back to where we were in the summertime. Not quite, right? You're probably gonna have water in your driveway again, sorry about that. I know you just got it dry. But it'll go right back down tomorrow. Like as soon as the wind shifts back and we get normal, that water will go back away, because we're back, we're low right now, the mean water table is low right now. So, but here's some things to think about and be prepared for. When we get, in the wintertime, when that ice jams up, that ice digs in and goes all the way to the bottom. So you get sheet ice and pack ice all the way to the bottom of the river and it creates an ice dam, okay? And so the water below the dam, there's no water. Like there's no water below the dam and there's tons of water above the dam. And so if you're above the dam, that water could be at like 580, 581, 582. And we know that our area floods at 579.1. So that's an important number to write down. So our area, basically below the city of St. Clair, floods at 579.10, okay? So, and that means water basically to the other side of M29, alright? So if you know that we see, if you know that we're getting those types of numbers, it could be possible for us to see the water come up two or three feet within hours and we could have ice across the roadway and water across the roadway and water in people's homes in the north, in the Clay Township side above Algonac, Algonac, and then potentially around the corner and in the North Channel. So those are the things we're working with and we're worried about this winter because our water level is just so high already without any flooding or anything else, okay? So, but we're not saying that to worry people, we're saying that to get people prepared. So we spent all summer and Clay Township did the best job of getting people prepared with sandbags and sand and ice, or water dams and everything else. Please, for your community, keep those in place and keep your homes protected, because that's the best thing you can do. The Coast Guard has told us that they won't move their cutters off of their continuous transit of vessels to a domestic flood situation until the water is affecting first floors of homes. That's not bad, right? Because what they're doing when they're moving commerce is they're breaking ice. And they're moving, they're allowing that water to move freely, right? So they're breaking through those ice dams. So the only time that we could find ourselves in a situation where we need to get them moving back towards us is when they're doing that ice breaking operation in a place that isn't the St. Clair River, right? So if they're up in Saginaw Bay or if they're down in Lake Erie and they're breaking a ship out that's stuck and it requires two or three icebreakers to do it and they've left us for a little while and we all of a sudden have an ice dam, it could be an eight-hour transit to get back to us to break that ice dam. And that's where it will be critical for us to keep a monitor on what's going on. And obviously, my staff and I, we will be doing that at all times. And I, if you know Mark and I, we watch those gauges. It's like always in my car, it's always everywhere I go. So, but it's important to know that the requirement for them to come and get off of their normal mission and come and do what's called exigent, exigent?
Yeah.
Exigent circumstances is, that's their third tier mission, right? Their first tier is to move commerce, or I'm sorry, search and rescue. Their second tier, and I have it here, because I don't have everything memorized, even though I'm a retired commander, right, you'd think I'd have their stuff. So search and rescue, it's on the back page. Urgent response and then exigent circumstances, I can't say that word for some reason. And then facilitation of navigation. So even though their normal work is facilitation of the maritime transportation system, that's what they're normally doing.
Hey, Justin.
Yes, sir.
What level does the water, does it start impacting people's first floors?
Right around 578.5.
Yep.
So that's where we were this year, when we really started seeing first floor flooding, was about 578.5. I think we only had a handful of houses that were really impacted at the end of the day. We saw a lot of people.
That was our highest peak.
That's right, we were at 578.44 was our highest level this summer.
Right.
And so what the Army Corps told us is, we know that we have major first floor flooding at 579.1. And so that's where they're gonna, where they're really gonna come rushing in, is when we see that number, okay? So what we're talking to people about a lot is, you know, make sure people are prepared and understand that you're in a totally different situation in the winter, because once that water gets to where you are, it's gonna freeze. And it's gonna create a totally different set of circumstances too, because it's gonna freeze all the drains, it's gonna freeze everything else and it's gonna create its own dams once it gets on the land. And so that's a whole other situation that county roads, our staff, we're all gonna have to deal with and the communities are gonna have to deal with as well. So that's an interesting situation. And one of the biggest questions and issues that we are gonna deal with, especially in your community, is the access to Harson's Island. A lot of times, we get the call, well, just break up the North Channel and then everything's gonna be fine. Except that's a terrible idea, right? One, we lose access to Harson's Island. Two, there's 850 households on Harson's Island that are year-round households, right? So you do the math on that, times it by three and a half people, that's 2,150 people plus. Just if you call that a normal family, right? It's usually four, but we'll do three and a half and call it, I'm super great with numbers. But anyway, call it 2,200 people, right, that live on there all year round. I'm sure it's more than that, but we're just playing around with numbers. So I have to have emergency services access to those people. And if we break up the North Channel and the conditions aren't right, you could lose that for a week. It's not a great thing. These guys back here will not be my friends if I do that. So we are very cognizant of how that's not a great idea. Now, depending on what the situation is, if all of a sudden I have six extra feet of water in Algonac, we may have to do that, okay? So those will be conversations that we will have with all of these gentlemen and you all and make sure that we're all on the same page, right? Because we may need relief in Algonac and the North end of Clay Township just so that we stop the flooding for a little while, to get egress in and out on M29. There may be things we need to do to talk about that. But that's just a conversation, okay? Does that make sense, any questions on that? We are not gonna rush into that, that is not something that we do lightly. That is not a normal course of action is to break that channel up. It just, it doesn't help us, it hurts us more than it helps us, okay? One of the big things, and I've already said this to most of you, but I'm saying it more for the community, because I know they're watching, is the flood insurance. The National Flood Insurance Program is very, very important. If you do not have flood insurance, now may be the time for you to purchase it, because there's a 30-day waiting period. Please push it to your community. I know that it's a little expensive, but if you have or live near or on the water and you have the means to do so, it might be important for you to take a look at it and see if it fits in your budget, in your model. Especially if you are threatened by floodwaters or could be threatened by floodwaters. Should, where we were in the summertime at 578.44 and you add another nine or so inches onto that next summer, if that's a potential, right? So that's what we're kinda looking at. Not knowing any more than the information we have right now, is nine inches could be a potential. That's just a number that was thrown at us. We're not, we're not running with that number, but we're just, for flood insurance purposes, that's the number we're talking about. Just to give somebody a gauge on if they're interested in buying flood insurance. And that came from the Army Corps of Engineers, the hydrologist Keith Compulswitz. So just think about flood insurance, it's a very great, it's a good program to protect your home. So we're just pushing that a little bit. So any questions or anything I can kinda talk about? I didn't go slide by slide, because I don't have it up here and it's, I'm just kinda talking about the notes, so.
I was gonna mention, Justin, I mean, I just recently purchased some flood insurance. And if anyone's gonna do this, it's to your interest to get a civil engineer and get an elevation certificate.
Absolutely.
It saved me $1,000 out of the flood insurance premium. And also.
Did that move you out of the AE zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it dropped my flood, literally, I got a check back for a thousand bucks.
Sure.
And number two, through the flood insurance program, you have to wait 30 days, but they will pay you or refund you.
Yes.
Up to $1,000 of flood mitigation. It could pay for sandbags, sand and labor placing it. It's a whole plethora of things that it will cover for flood mitigation. And I would urge you, if that's something you're interested in, you know, talk to the insurance, your flood insurance person, they could fill you in on that. A lot of people don't realize that, so.
Are there any other questions? I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, to follow up on that, conversely, I worked with the FEMA and the flood insurance program personally firsthand and understand that contents, your personal property is not part of the insurance.
Correct.
So most people have their contents insured for 65 to 70% of their home's value. So it's important that your sofas, your TVs, your entertainment packages are up off of the floor.
That's right.
If you are expecting flood. Because that part of your home, the contents portion, is not covered.
Yes, sir, that's correct. And that's a great point, I appreciate you putting that in there. And throughout the summer, and we're gonna do it again, should we see flood warnings and prior to flood warnings, we're gonna be recommending continuously, take all of the important things off of that first floor and get them either in a pod, if you don't have a second floor, get them out of the floodplain area and to a safe location if you, or to a second floor. Get them out of harm's way, it's most important, right?
Yep.
So, thank you, I appreciate that.
So just to expound too, we really don't know what next year's gonna look like.
Right.
They're throwing numbers around, you know, eight, nine inches higher. That's just because we're eight, nine inches higher today than we were last year.
Correct.
And if we had the exact same winter and spring as we did last year, then we will be eight, nine inches higher.
Right.
But hopefully, we don't, we won't. And we'll probably have an update and really get serious in what, or January, February? Once we get more numbers, we know where we're at with the snowpack and Lake Superior.
So between the middle to end of February and the beginning of March, we should know what the northern Michigan and upper peninsula of Michigan looks like as far as winter. And we'll know what the coverage on Lake Superior looks like. And that will really feed into our watershed numbers, that will feed into all of the modeling that happens that will tell us at least what the run-up to the spring will look like. And then it depends on precipitation numbers and water into the system for the next spring and summer. Yes, sir.
And I'd like to mention too, one advantage that we have going forward is, we learned an awful lot this year.
Absolutely.
With the road commission, Justin, ourselves, my water department and everybody. I mean, there was a steep learning curve and, you know, we got a pretty good handle on what needs to be done and how to do it now. And like Justin and I talked about earlier, and we have open lines of communication now with the Army, with NOAA and all these people, which we, we didn't have really good relationships with them before, so.
Yeah, I feel like we all should at least get a bachelor's in floodplain management and flooding situations, for sure, so.
Any other questions for Justin? Alright, well, thanks.
Any questions out here?
Yeah.
That's the other reason we're here, so. Alright, thank you all.
Thanks for being up, thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Thank you, I think. Okay, moving right along. Next thing on our agenda, extended temporary employment for Leah. As you might see in your packet, we hire her for 90 days or 91 days, because that's what the labor contract specifies we're allowed to do. And unfortunately, our, the person that she's replacing on medical leave is still out and it's gonna, she's gonna be out for a while. Hoping to get her back sooner. But anyhow, I contacted the union reps and they agreed to extend employment for Leah until the person that's out can come back full-time. Or if something happens and she can't come to work, and once we hear that, we turn this into, you know, do something different, hire a full-time person, so. I'm looking for board approval to extend the temporary employment of Leah Bacon, is it?
Bacon.
Bacon.
I'll make a motion to extend the temporary employment of Leah Bacon.
Support.
Okay, a motion, support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, anyone opposed? Okay, motion approved. And next, we have a, a temporary substitute electrical inspector, and, uh, we went to the, both our, our inspectors to say, "Hey, if you guys want a vacation, you know, we need a, a sub." And they, they, they found them. I did call the, the cities where they're at right now, and, and I got glowing reviews for them. And so, I'd like to make, or be able to hire these guys on a temporary basis as needed if the other inspectors are, are gone or can't make it for any reason. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the substitute electrical inspector slash plan reviewer for vacation or emergency coverage, Joe Price.
Support.
Yeah, a motion, support. Any discussion?
Do you have a picture of him?
No.
So you mentioned this individual is employed elsewhere. They would have the availability to cover our vacation openings?
Yeah, yeah. They, they, they both agreed to it, and then, like I say, the, I found them, or we found them by asking, you know, our current people, who would they recommend? And that's how we got their names, and they're submitted, and they, they will help us out.
So is this a temporary or a long?
No, it's for planned vacations or emergency situations.
So is this going to continue on year after year for this person?
As long as they're willing to step in, if somebody wants to take a two-week vacation.
Or we make a change.
Or we find somebody else.
Okay, so there's no 90-day temporary suspension or anything like that?
No. It's just the availability to give our building clerk the ability to have someone that they can call for an inspection if somebody's on vacation.
I understand.
I'll make a motion to...
No, we already have them.
We have a motion.
Oh, for, for the next one?
No, we gotta vote on this one. So we have a motion to approve a temporary substitute employment for electrical inspector and plan reviewer for Joe Price. Any more discussion?
Yeah, are they gonna adhere to our current job description, and has there been any discussion about wages?
I believe they get paid the same as by, per inspection.
Okay.
And, yeah, they, they, they have to uphold our ordinances and, and our, our policies and practices, just like any employee would.
They go by the state building codes.
Yeah, state code.
Much of a variation from township to township.
Has he worked in Clay Township before?
I don't believe so.
Well, I was kinda joking in a way about the picture, but I like to see, when I see Clay Township officials out in the road, you know, inspecting.
Well, they'll have IDs.
Like to know who they are.
Right.
But we can do it, some, you know, go ahead and do the vote.
I'll see a picture when he comes in for you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we basically have the same thing for substitute plumbing inspector, Ron Barnes.
I'll make a motion to approve temporary substitute plumbing inspector, plan reviewer for vacation and emergency coverage with Mr. Ron Barnes.
Support.
Okay, a motion, lots of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have a resolution for post-construction stormwater design standards. This is part of our, it's, it's called the MS4 permit now, it's, used to be our SWIPPE permit. And if anyone knows, I, I just hate the whole thing, why we have, we, we have to file a, a stormwater permit, because we have seven catch bases in two different parking lots, basically. And because of that, it, it, I don't know, I think we're up about four or five grand, because every five years, we gotta make a huge report. And it was about five, six years ago, I basically said, "We're not gonna do it." And, because right in the law, it says, it says, point blank, it says, it says, "Who needs to apply? Our military bases, large hospitals, and large complexes." And if you're a rural area, you need not to apply. So I told them, "We're a rural area," and, and they said, "No, you're a complex." Like, "Really?" And then I, I still wasn't gonna do that, and the DEQ, they sought me out at one conference, and, and they said, "Arty, we're gonna sue Clay Township, and you might win, but we're gonna bump it up and bump it up and bump it up. It's gonna end up costing your township like hundreds, a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, so we're doing a SWIPPE permit." And this is part of it.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-26, post-construction design standards.
Support.
Yeah, motion, support. And why we do this is, we, we piggyback on St. Clair County's SWIPPE permit, because all the, the drains and ditches and everything are county roads, and the county owns them, we don't. So they do a lot of the, the work for us, and that's basically why we need to pass this resolution. Any discussion?
Sounds like quid pro quo to me.
Yeah.
Sounds like extortion to me.
It is extortion. I'd rather not say what I feel about it right now, but...
Don't we have this debate every year?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, let's move on.
Yeah. Okay.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. I think this is the first year I voted for it, truthfully. All right, next before us, we have curbside refuge recycling collection special assessment levy. We talked about this before with the Out Islands. We did get a lot of phone calls complaining about North Channel, Snibora, and Baltimore Highway. I think the DOD is in this too. And that uses the dumpsters at Deckers. Got a hold of Deckers. Years past, they weren't really in favor of having them there, but now all of a sudden they are. I think they, they realized if they go, they would have to pay for, for containers themselves. But we probably had, I don't know, 20, 30 phone calls about it. I actually, it was interesting, I got a phone call yesterday that this lady that doesn't want is claiming that her brother-in-law got a bunch of people, put up a bunch of people that don't live out here to call and complain about it, so who knows? Maybe we should, next year, do a mailing with a survey or something, I don't know. But anyhow, I'm recommending that we leave the Decker, the dumpsters at Deckers Landing for right now. And we also include these people on North Channel, Snibora, DOD, and the Baltimore Highway to maintain, stay into our collection, garbage collection program.
You're recommending, or is that your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Yeah, motion, support. Any discussion?
Did you leave out Mudhead Highway?
No, that's right, with the Mudheadens in there. Not too many people know where that is.
So, in conjunction with this, and, and I'm, I, I think I can go along with supporting this, but one of the major problems that we had is the debris in and around the dumpsters.
Yep.
So, I feel like we're doing an injustice if we don't at least address that now or in the very near future. I know that we employ some people down there for our refuge and, and for our recycling, and perhaps we can work something as a...
Well, I, I kinda put that back on Deckers, Deckers Landing left. If it's a mess, you need to place your own area.
Okay.
And we were told by some, by some property owners that the garbage around that dumpster is not a problem, that Deckers cleans it off.
Okay. That helps, thank you.
Yeah, it, I don't know, maybe next year, we, depending on how many complaints we have when people pay their taxes, I know we're gonna get one complaint. We'll send out a mailer and actually do a, a more scientific study on it, because there is a silent majority too.
I think you know my feeling on this, I mean, we discussed alternate methods of trash collection and refuge out there at the island, so. We do that survey, that's fine, but I think we probably will see an increase, or at least with the absence of the dumpsters, we're gonna have a lot of trash laying around where they used to be. That's just human nature.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
No.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, 6-1. Next, we have easement consideration on 7861 Middle Channel Drive. This is a homeowner that wants to get natural gas to their home, and for the SEMCO to get it to them, they have to put a line across a lot that we own, as you can see in the picture. So this is a right-of-way grant that we're granting, we'd be granting to SEMCO to perform the necessary paperwork, so they can run a line, a gas line to this homeowner.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed gas line running across our lot, described as 0015 dash, 00154 dash 0000, and what else is on there? Okay, yeah, 005400.
Support.
Yeah, motion, support. Any discussion?
Why do we own that lot, by the way?
Good question. I mean, we, we have lots everywhere. Oh, the township owns it, so, really? And we do, like, like the, the corner of where Pearl Beach Lions is, that little corner where there's flowers.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that, we own that little piece there.
Just where the flowers are.
Yeah. And, because I started complaining to the Pearl Beach, "This is all full of frag mighties." But they said, "It's Clay Township." I'm like, "Really? Well, we're gonna have to clean it up." And we did. But, yeah, there's, it's, yeah.
Well, that line's running down the existing, existing driveway anyway.
Yep.
Or to the side of it.
Exactly.
I've been down that road duck hunting, by the way.
Okay.
Don't tell them.
I won't. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Moving right along, we, John wants to buy an air compressor for the water department, and we got three different quotes, and he's recommending portable air compressor from Metro Air. It's a Solair 185, 185 portable air compressor, priced at $23,100. As he mentioned, our old air compressor is 1966, and has a lot of breakdowns and hard to get parts. And this was a budgeted item, we put in the budget, split between the sewer 970 line item and the water department 970 line item.
Board, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Solair 185 portable air compressor for the water department and for the sewer department, purchased from Metro Air to cost of $23,100, derived from line items 590-970 and 591-970.
Support.
Yeah, motion, and support. Any discussion?
Hey, how does this air compressor compare to the one that the fire department uses for SCIBA?
That they use for what, Mark? I'm sorry.
For self, self-contained breathing apparatus.
Oh, I have no idea. Totally different. This is air pressure.
I know, but I wanna say how it compares to it.
I have no idea.
And can we use it?
I, I don't know what they have. This is a portable jet, uh, air compressor on wheels, with the hose real, I gave you a picture of it, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is there a, a filter on it, and if it was necessary to use it to fill up SCIBAs? Is that something that was possible? Just asking.
Yeah, we run our jackhammers and spray fire hydrants with it, and...
For breathing apparatus?
Maybe.
Well, they, they have a different filters to take the oil and, and condensation out of the air.
Oh, oh.
So it's a totally different animal.
Yeah.
So there's no comparison. Thank you.
Yeah, no comparison.
John, your last one was from 1966?
Used.
I don't know how many of you guys remember Gus Man, I'm sure, Kenny Richardson, the
old boss, bought a, a one-ton pickup truck and an air compressor used for $3,000. That's the air compressor.
We, we try and take care of this one, please?
I sure will.
Thanks, buddy.
Any more discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yep.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have fire department new hire, part-time Eric Caldwell. Got Fire One, Fire Two, and EMT, and paramedic, and all that good stuff.
Good evening. I'd like permission from the township board to hire part-time firefighter Eric Caldwell. He presently lives in Lennox Township. He's certified Fire One, Fire Two. He's also holds a paramedic license, medical license. Mr. Caldwell works for Lennox, Richmond Lennox EMS, and he also served with the Armed Services, the Marine Corps.
Awesome. Any questions for Eric?
Where was your last duty?
I was, I was stationed in Quantico, Virginia, in my last two years as an instructor.
Currently employed by any other departments? Any other fire departments?
No, no, sir.
Why do you wanna work for Clay Township?
Because you guys have a very, or relatively higher call volume.
Yes.
Compared to, in, in relation to the size of your township, and you guys have a variety of different calls, whether or not it's fires, medical calls, including, you know, anything from motor vehicle accidents to search and rescue, or recovery, or anything like that on the water, and...
Good answer.
So.
So you like all that good action?
Yeah, yes. I was a, a water survival instructor while I was in the Marine Corps as well, so...
In your blood, apparently.
Cool.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire department new hire part-time for Eric Caldwell.
Support. Okay, motion, support. Any more questions for Eric, or anything else worth the chief? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations, Eric.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Yes. Okay, next, we have for the fire department generator maintenance agreement, and it comes out of line 933. Again, it's a budget item. This is with American Generator Sales and Service. We actually use this company for emergency service for our generator, the, we share with this building and the police. And they're, they're a lot better than the company we, we've been using. And I believe cheaper too, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I believe this quote is cheaper than what we had budgeted for. So, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for fire department generator maintenance for two thousand forty-seven dollars from line item two oh six zero 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 nine three three point zero zero. Support?
Okay, motion support. This isn't a contract, is it? Just a quote. All in favor, signify by saying, oh, any more discussion? I'm sorry. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And next, we have the fire department mandated fit testing. Comes out of line item nine sixty-nine for, to be conducted as a requirement for myosha. Make sure the masks and everything fit right for firemen.
Board, I'll make a motion that we support and approve the mandated fit testing in the amount of four thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars coming from line item two oh six zero 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 nine six nine zero zero.
Support?
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, last thing we have on our agenda, we're gonna go into a closed session and talk about a property acquisition. Just like to remind everybody, there's really three reasons why we can go into a closed session. Property acquisition happens to be one of them. So, we're gonna do a recess of this meeting and go into a closed session, and everyone's free to leave if they want to.
You have to do a roll call.
What's that?
You do have to do a roll call to close.
Oh, yeah, we do have to do a roll call to close, so. I will make a motion that we do a recess of this session and enter into a closed session.
Support?
Yeah, motion support. All in favor of that? Signify by saying aye.
Nope, we gotta do a roll call.
We gotta do the roll call first.
Sandy Koufal?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. All right, we're gonna go into a closed session then, so. We'll be back.
Is it still recording?
Yes.
Well, if you're watching on TV land, sorry for the delay. We were out in closed session talking about property acquisition. I'll entertain a motion that we enter back into our general open session.
That is support.
We got support. Okay, it's, what, is that clock right? Eight thirty-four. We go back into open session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Motion granted, and we are back in open session. So we did have a discussion on a property acquisition, and I will make the motion that the board gives me the right to do a purchase offer at the amount as discussed in closed session. And, yeah, basically, that's it. For the property. Here we have motion of support. And just for everybody, i- if it is accepted, then it would, it will all become public at that time, the price, the property offer and acceptance. And that will be done in, not in closed session, but in a public meeting. So we have motion of support and any more discussion? Hearing none. I don't think we need a roll call, do we? I don't think so either. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that gets us through our new business on our agenda. Actually, we have board member comments. Cindy?
I just want to take the time to welcome Eric Caldwell to Coldwell, to our fire department. He's looking for someplace a little bit busier than where he's been. Hopefully, he'll find it here. And I want to thank Justin and Eric from Emergency Management for coming on out. We appreciate their time.
Mark?
Very well said, Cindy. Have planning commission on Wednesday, the 23rd, public hearing for seven three one seven Dyke, Old Kupinski Island. Hopefully, they have all the permits and everything necessary to move forward, but we'll see. Thank you.
I'm glad to see that we have some temporary substitute inspectors for, in case the regular ones go on vacation, because that's not, that'd be, that's good to have so that we don't keep our citizens waiting, waiting, waiting for inspections.
We're busy.
And we're busy, yes. So I'm glad to see that was taken care of.
Andy?
I'd just like to thank anyone in the community that came out and helped support the AYFL Pink Game this weekend. It was a very nice weekend and a great event, and everyone have a happy and safe Halloween. Get lots of candy.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing our citizens out this weekend. Hopefully, we've got some cooperative rather on the 26th of October for our Scarecrow Festival with DJs and all the furnishings. I want to remind everybody to be conscious of your speed on Morrow Road. I know with Starville being closed, it's a, it's a superhighway now. That's a residential area. There's deer, there's farms, there's kids. Please be careful, and don't veer for deer.
I just want to say, I know I took some phone calls about the Decker dumpster, and I just hope that those that were concerned that we were removing that dumpster, I hope that they're happy and they support, you know, our decision going forward and what we do.
And hope that's pleased well. Yeah, in fact, I had, okay, I had an issue on one of the dumpsters that we're getting ready to pull. Someone put a bunch of appliances and stuff in there, and I had to call them up Saturday and say, you know, decision's yours, but if you don't pull them out, I'm going to pull them out and charge you for it. And they ended up removing like five appliances and a bunch of steals. That's what happens in these things. So anyhow, yes, the pinkout was great Saturday, and I hope we have a great Scarecrow Festival this coming Saturday, and everyone be safe for Halloween. Congratulations to Eric Caldwell. He seems like a fine young man.
Yes, yes.
And I hope he becomes a great asset, oh, he will be a great asset to our fire department.
Very professional.
And again, there are tentatively, Wednesday, November 13th, a public hearing for our master plan, which is a very important document. It's a vision where we should be heading towards 20 years from now, and it'll be 3:00 PM November 13th on the island and 6:00 PM on the mainland. Will be more of that come on that in the near future. That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn?